Okay, it is 7:00 PM, Tuesday, March 16th, 2021. Well, this is the regularly scheduled meeting of the Arundel Planning Board. I need a roll call.
Yay, Marty.
Marty up in the corner.
Susan?
We got Susan. Got Roger is here and Tom McGinn is here. So between the five of us, we do have a quorum. First item on the agenda is the approval of the agenda. On the agenda, we have the approval of minutes for February 16th, 2021, and March 2nd, 2021. We have public comment of land use ordinance amendments. Item number one is the citizens' request to delete the 1,000-foot setback requirement for the medical marijuana caregiver facility from a church and a daycare facility. Item number two is discussion with action, proposed amendments to land use ordinance 9312 Cluster Housing Planned Unit Developments. Then if there's any other business, the town planner will let us know what that is. And when we're all said and done with that, we will adjourn and go home.
I'll move we approve as just read.
Second.
Motion was made by Tom, seconded by Roger to approve the agenda. Any discussion? Hearing none. Marty?
Aye.
Roger?
Aye.
Tom?
Aye.
Susan?
Aye.
It is unanimous. The first item, planning board minutes for February 16th.
I move that we accept them as written.
I'll second that.
Okay, any discussion?
I don't think I was there.
No, you weren't, Marty. Roger?
Aye.
Tom?
Aye.
Susan?
Aye.
Four, four yeses and one abstention. The next item is the minutes of the meeting on March 2nd.
And I'll move that we approve that as well.
Okay.
I'll second that.
You were not at the meeting.
Oh, so I won't second that.
Great.
Aye.
Marty seconds.
I wasn't at that meeting too.
That is correct, but three out of the four planning board members that were on are here. So that being said.
Second.
Motion was made and seconded. Tom made the motion, Marty seconded it. Any discussion?
Nope.
There ain't none. Marty?
Yay.
Tom?
Aye.
Okay, there are three in favor and it looks like three abstentions because the other three members were not here on that date. We will then move on from there. I'd like to welcome Jens Bergen to the meeting. The next item on the agenda, public comment. This is the time in which any member of the public that wants to bring something to the board's attention and they, and it is not on the agenda. Please say so. Nope. I will close the public comments at this point. And we will move on. Land use ordinance amendments. Citizens' request to delete the 1,000-foot setback requirement of a medical marijuana caregiver facility from a church and daycare facility. The applicant is Neato Inoue of the Solar Center, 25 Limerick Road, Tax Map, 35 Lot 13 in the DB1 and DB2 districts. And you should have the letter of request from Neato. The, some notes from the town about the marijuana caregiver applicants and the response to the planning board. Noto, do you have anything you would like to say?
Well, I think the, there are some differences in the distance that the town, St. Maine, and actually all over the country, they're all over the map, anywhere from 200 feet to over 1,000 feet. I believe that 1,000-feet distance is kind of mimicking and paralleling the drug-free zone for the federal drug rules. The 1,000 feet is mentioned there. And I tried to look, look around in federal language, whether if it also includes daycare and, and church. And I couldn't find it. The state of Maine does have the language of daycare and a church, I believe. Is that right, Ted?
I'm not sure. Some towns do. I don't know if the state of Maine itself has one.
Yeah, so it's, the, the, the language is quite varied between town to town, even state by state. But I believe that the 1,000 feet comes from the federal Class 1 drug-free zone language. And 1,000 feet is long distance. And I just, I don't really think that the daycare attendees would have any kind of access to locked-up facility that I would be under. It would be indoor locked facilities that, that I don't think the five, five or six-year-olds will have any means of really breaking in. And I would greatly appreciate it if, if the, even the number get, goes down to, if you wanted to keep the language of the church and daycare, I think that distance, say 250 feet, which is the, 200 feet is the shortest distance that I think I've found, but if you, anywhere from 200 to 250 feet from 1,000 feet would be beneficial to me. Over.
The board have any comment?
Well, do we know, do we know what the distance is? I mean, I mean, as I, as I look at the.
I think it's 385 feet from the daycare to Neato's property.
And it's 884 feet from the church.
What church?
The one that is closed now, the one that's over near the seafood center?
Yeah.
Yeah, it is, it is closed.
Okay.
For Holy Donuts going.
Right.
Really?
Yep.
Oh, that's great.
Right, it's, it's 315 feet away from Joanne's Children's Center, which is right there on Limerick Road.
Right.
And then it's 385 feet from the playground that is located at 39 Limerick Road and 884 feet from the Good Shepherd's Cove. I'm trying to place the playground. It's on Limerick Road. I probably didn't buy it a million times and can't place it.
It's Child Development Services.
So if I could.
Your county coming in to get services for children and for their families.
Okay, Tom?
Well, the way I look at it is, I, I consider this to be like for any other medical like a pharmacy, and Kenny Bunk, Walgreens almost shares, not Walgreens, but CVS almost shares the parking lot with, with whatever the name it is, St. Monica's or Martha's or Sacred Heart. It's, it probably 140 feet from each other. It, and I don't think that's a problem. I, I think it's, it's under lock, it, it's, it's regulated. There are, there are, I'm sure state and federal regulations that Nato will have to follow. I just don't see the, the, any great danger. I agree with Nato that for school, even that, but the school is not, not being that, we're not being asked to address that, but for, for a five-year-old to have any risk unless their parents are going to stop by, but even if the parents stop by, you're not selling the marijuana to anybody but a medical supplier. So I, I just see that it's, I think it might have been a little overboard when this was written. I probably was involved when that, when that ordinance was written, but looking at it, I'm all right with having that changed or pulled right out. I'm all right with having it pulled right out, but to go to a lesser number of feet, I'd be all right with that too.
A clarification, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, please.
I just, new rules are coming out on medical marijuana. They just, I just got a notice about it today. For medical marijuana caregiver providers, you know, you probably want to hook in on that because they've just released a new set of rules. Pretty, pretty, pretty interesting. And this could be a public hearing in a week on those rules. But caregivers can also sell from their facility too. They, they, they have abilities to sell, so there is a retail component that they can do to their clients. The clients either pick it up or they, they can out-of-state clients with the proper credentials can, can pick it up. So there, there might be some traffic there, just, just to make it clear. I know Neato has talked about making this his facility primarily production for dispensary, but according to the rules, he's got to have 25% of that production for existing clients or for his own clients. So there, there will be either, he, or he's going to deliver or he's going to have people coming in, so it's not just pure production. I'll make that clear.
Well, my, my, my intent is not never to be having any kind of traffic to 25 Limerick Road. I only have Mac, Macroom that I talked about, the, the, the lab in Bedford that is compounding pharmaceutical-grade cannabis oil in low dosage. And that, he will be the only connection to his, his medical marijuana caregiver license and mine will be the only two that will be related to each other basically privately.
I think the town planner is making the point that if it is your facility, you can only sell 75% of the product. The other 25% must be dealt to your clients.
Right.
That means they're going to have to come to you and pick it up.
That's the only thing.
Or I could deliver to them.
Or you could deliver it.
Yeah.
And, and the thing, Mr. Chairman, is we, just, just a point of clarification also. Neato has his, his business model, but, but there can be those who have their clients come to them. 100%. So he's, he's looking more at production level, but this change will apply across the board to all caregiver medical marijuana caregivers.
That is, that is the one thing, that's not the only thing, but that is one of the items that concerns me about this because it, you're looking to change the rules to benefit you. The problem is that a change in this rule is going to spread across the entire town and every medical marijuana caregiver in town will be able to move closer to a church, to a daycare, to a school. I, I don't like the, the idea of doing anything that is for the benefit of one person. The other problem that I have is that whether we like the idea or not, marijuana is still a Class 1 drug under the DEA rules and is subject to prosecution. And that in and of itself for me is enough to say, no, I don't think we should be having that because I don't think that we as a judicial body want to be caught in the position of flaunting federal law. Hang on, Susan has a comment. Susan sent it.
Well, no, it's Susan Roth.
Oh, it's Susan Roth. I'm sorry. I thought I saw Susan's hand up.
So I sort of feel the same way you do and, you know, I respect the fact that you only have one client and you're not going to be selling and it's basically a grow house, but, you know, you're not the only one down the road who's going to be impacted by this change and they may have multiple customers and multiple dispense, places where they are, you know, selling their wares and, you know, the fact that it's, you know, a daycare center and not a school as opposed to whatever. I just think it's, I think what you want makes the rules so vague and so tailored to you that we're exposed as a town in terms of new entities coming here and trying to control what's being done because the rule that we've instituted for you is so broad that we've, you know, the horse is out of the barn and there's no way for us, you know, to make order out of what we've done. And the second thing I would say is I think we should all look at the rules that Ted said came down today and look at them carefully and see how we might have to change or pivot what we currently have on the books to accommodate some of these rule changes. So I would say we, we're not prepared to make a decision tonight and B, I think we really have to consider carefully what we allow because this is only opening the door to many people and businesses that are going to follow. So that's my comment.
I find it ironic though that there, there could be someone that, that's within 25 feet of that daycare that, that's growing it right out in the, in the yard. There's no restrictions to, to grow in, as far as I know, next door. My neighbor would be growing.
They can grow it for personal use, but they can't sell it.
I don't, I, I don't know what the difference would be. Growing, growing it is out in the open. Whereas for this, for this type of facility, it would be under lock and key.
Jens?
You know, yeah. I, I think my colleagues have all made very good points, even though you're, you're coming at this from different areas. I am persuaded by Tom's remarks about, you know, the, the Walgreens and, you know, they're peddling obviously lawful drugs out of there and they're right near a church and so what? Good point. But and, and I'm really not too concerned about daycares either. I mean, as somebody made the point about, you know, should we be concerned about five-year-olds breaking in? No. The, the group that I'm, would be most concerned about would be teenagers. They're the ones that are really in the crosshairs here for irresponsible access to it and that kind of thing. So in Nato's situation, I'm, I'm not so concerned about the daycare down the street, but I, I do want to, to preserve the distance that's contemplated from schools, for example, where elder kids, you know, junior high and above were going to be situated. And I think that Susan's point that, you know, we could be a lot better educated very soon if we have exposure to the forthcoming rules before we make this decision. So I, I, I don't know that for me, it's now an all or nothing decision. I was kind of chilling to Nato's ideas initially, but I think listening to Tom, I think there's some, a little bit of movement that could be done, but I, I think we have to do it with some modicum of restraint as Susan suggests.
You've got to keep in mind that we did a survey in 2018 and all of, every aspect of it was rejected by the survey. We've got to keep that in mind because whatever we do and make changes, we've got to explain to the people of the town why we did it.
Good point.
There's, there's a copy of that survey under the Marijuana Caregivers Amendments. It was out on the, out on the town website. And it was, it was not, not even close. The closest that it came was 72.8 to 27.2. That was the closest spread that we had. It, it went much higher in, in some of the other instances. They were, they were across the border, two to one. We don't want it in this town. We had medical marijuana because it was forced upon us by the state. But all of the other aspects of retail marijuana were left up to the town. In fact, the town opted out. If you remember correctly, it, it was a vote of, we had, I, we had to choose between opting in and allowing it to come on or opting out. And after this survey, we opted out.
Can I say something?
No, yes, yes, Susan.
So I want you to just to kind of think too, because Child Development Services isn't a daycare. Child Development Services is a Department of Education. So whether you're saying in the area of school, it technically is under the Guides of the Department of Education. It's all of York County coming to that specifically for, for birth to age five. So it's actually the, all the people, all that, because I worked there, all the, I worked there before, all your emails are .gov, edu.gov. So that's actually an education department. So I don't know if that goes under the Guides of the School because it is considering also opening a, a developmental preschool there. So it's under the global thing of a state department-run education system. So you might want to check into that too before you say it's a daycare because it's not, there, there's a day, there was a daycare back there, but the actual Child Development Services, which takes up almost that entire building at 39 right next door, is actually part of the Department of Education.
But yeah, there, there is, I'm, I think the daycare is still there, Joanne's daycare. It's located in the back. When you're facing the building, it's in the back left rear side of the building.
And I appreciate that, but you're, there's two, there's two things in there. The whole part of the building, you know, the whole building itself pretty much is Child Development Services. So that is a Department of Education building. And then Joanne's is a daycare behind it, has nothing to do with Child Development Services. It's, it's a private business. So I just wanted to say, school versus not, it's kind of, I just want, that's kind of a blurry line of whether or not it's part of school because it's part of the Department of Education.
Well, and as we discussed, this is bigger than just Neato's request. And that is, he only has one client. But what about the dispensary that has 50 clients? And what if it's next to a junior high as opposed to a, an elementary school or a nursery school or a daycare? I mean, it's, it's not specific enough. We would have to get fairly specific, I think, if we wanted, if we felt comfortable enough to make a change. But again, I think it's premature, given the fact that Ted says new things are coming down the pike and we really don't know what those things are yet and we haven't seen the document. And I think we should see it first before we make any decisions.
No, no, I agree with that. It is, it is problematic that there are new rules in the works. I would like to know what they are before we can, can move further down the way. Neato?
Well, I, I like to point out a couple of things. First of all, I believe the, the, the survey that was taken was for specifically for retail marijuana shop, adult use, manufacturing and wherever else that.
Social club.
So, social clubs, testing facility. It was all the various retail, you're correct. It was all the retail aspects.
It, it had nothing to do with the medical marijuana aspect of it. The, the only reason, well, and, and Susan, it's the, the, the district that's allowed to have a medical marijuana, I believe in Arundel, is in one zone only. I believe. Is that correct, Ted?
Correct. Yeah, it's in the DB2.
That's the only zone that's allowed, so there's no junior high school or any other concerns that you might have raised. It's not a town-wide change that it's, you know, it's being called for. I just think that DB2, the only reason that I believe that the DB2 was allocated as a medical marijuana district was because state mandated that you cannot, the towns cannot restrict medical marijuana entirely. You are allowed to restrict adult use, dispensary, retail stores of, of, of sort. But I, I'm bringing it up to say that medical marijuana realm is totally different than the dispensaries. We're not talking about same thing.
Well, but I still think that, a couple of things. One is what is now one building could easily become another. And while it isn't necessarily going to become an elementary school, it could be an after-school program. It could be a bunch of other things that entertain, you know, teenagers or young adults or a counseling center or, you know, whatever could exist in the DB2 and, you know, things change hands and purpose, uses change in buildings as we all know. But I still think this should be tabled until we get a chance. So I think we should stop our discussion until we get a chance to really look at what is new and what we have to do according to the new rules of the state and what we're willing to do in the town and how much leeway we have between the two. That's, I mean.
I believe what came out today is around the adult use rule, rulings. I don't think it has much to do with medical marijuana side of it.
Actually, this was medical marijuana. I don't think it came out today. I saw it today. It was sent to me today. That's, that's what I mean by, it came, it came to me today. I started.
Susan, if you want to make that a motion?
I move that we table this discussion until the board has a chance to review this new document that Ted received today on medical marijuana and the state of Maine.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Motion has been made and seconded to table this discussion until such time as we've been able to review the latest rules that have come out. Any discussion?
Yes.
Yeah, Tom?
So when, is that, is that information already available, Ted?
I'll send you the link.
Okay.
Send you the link. I'll, yeah, I'll send you the link. I'll send, Neato's probably got it, but I'll send it to all parties.
Okay.
Great.
Marty, you were going to say something?
Yeah, I was going to say is, at that case, had Ted looked at it, had been able to decipher any of it of some of the new changes or, or didn't get a chance to?
I, it's very lengthy. It's very lengthy. And I was going through it and it, it was, I didn't get past the requirements for a medical marijuana caregiver, a prescriber, a patient, an out-of-state patient. That's about as far as I had gotten. It was that very detailed. The rules you're going to, Neato has to do in order to register as a medical marijuana caregiver. It's, it's really involved. So I had gotten that far. I didn't get to any, any of the operational things. I was trying to skim through it, but, you know, only had a certain amount of time at work before the phone started ringing again.
Can you, can you confirm the section number on that or not?
It's the rules that, it, it was rulemaking that they were doing.
Okay. Would you mind saying, I, 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 I thought they were coming out with adult use ruling. And they were talking about putting the medical marijuana in a back burner, but if, if you don't mind, if you could also send me the link, that'd be great.
Be happy to. I think I agree with you, Neato. They were, they were actually planning to put medical marijuana on the back burner, but it looks like the Office of Marijuana Policy has gotten a lot of pushback from the medical marijuana community about, you know, the rush for retail and running over the medical marijuana side. about, you know, the rush for retail and running over the medical marijuana side. So they've, they've really geared up, because I heard the same thing this past fall, that they were gonna push the retail side faster than the medical. And we've created a whole bunch of new rules for medical, so.
Okay.
Okay.
Any other discussion on the motion? Hearing none. Marty?
Yay.
Roger?
Hey.
Tom?
Yeah, I.
Susan?
Yes.
Jens?
Hi.
It is unanimous. We will table this until we have a chance to look at the, at the latest set of rules.
Okay.
And I'll get that out to you tomorrow now, okay?
Great, thank you. Thanks for your time.
Thank you, Neato.
Thank you.
Next item on the, on the list, proposed amendments to Land Use Ordinance nine three twelve, Cluster Housing Planned Unit Developments. And I did see something on that. All I have to do is find it.
Let me know if you want me to send it to you, Rich.
I think it's still sitting in my, in the email.
Hold on, I'll send it to you.
No, I was, I was just gonna reach out and grab it.
Okay.
Are we working off version one point four?
One point four, yes.
Okay.
Dated February twenty-second?
Yes.
Okay, I got it.
That should be upgraded to March third.
I gotta go get my glasses. I'll be right back.
Version one point four. And I realized as I was going over it today, I had, it had dumped somewhere in here, it dumped the, the process of actually setting up the minimum lot size, which I was working on. I ran out of time. And I can explain it to you. But where, where we wanted to go on this, I believe, is to, is to go through some of the changes we were talking about last time. We kind of rushed through a few things. I think the biggest one that we started, if you remember in the minutes, Marty had recommended was that the, regarding the question on dimensional exemptions, whether or not, when it came down to the amount of open space that would be retained by reduction of lot size, whether that in the rural districts, and there are two, two issues here. In the rural districts, whether that dedicated open space was equal to or exceed fifty percent of the gross area of, or the net residential acreage of the lot. That residential acreage, of course, is, is that the good area. The area that isn't filled with wetlands or has roads or extremely steep slopes on it. Because the board had, had concerns before that the open space that the planning board has been receiving has been primarily wetlands. All the wetlands have in the past been automatically dedicated for open space, even though the wetlands are undevelopable. They cannot be developed because of the soil, so the nature of the soils. And in many cases, because they're part of a regulated area, usually surely unzoning. But net residential acreage accounts for all wetlands, even if they're a little spotty wetlands, so. So the concern was, should we, should the board go and eliminate wetlands as a, as an eligible element for open space? Or should we stay with the gross acreage? Or should we come up with some sort of hybrid? And this is only, remember, fifty percent is only in the rural districts, whatever that is. Remember, we, we no longer can identify any of our districts as rural or, or residential or business. So I think we need to call out what districts we're talking about. Is that gonna be, assume, off the bat, it's gonna be the RC or the R four districts, Rural Conservation District. But will that also include the R three, which is actually rural residential? You may recall that the planning, that the Comprehensive Plan Committee designated R three as a growth area and that should be combined with the R two district. And the board has not agreed with this at this point or made changes to the R three district to make it, to change it so that it would actually be absorbed into the R two. And the question that still remains is, what do you want to do with that one? Or should we just exclude that from being defined as a rural district at this point?
My, my thought on it? Two different thoughts. I think, I think it's, the R three should not be combined with the R two.
What about the R four? The R three and the R four together?
No, I don't think either one of them should be together. R three acts like a buffer between the, the density of the R one and the R two and between the R four and the rural conservation areas. So it's, it's creating a buffer between them to, otherwise you have a very sharp dividing line about what you can or cannot do in the different zones. That being said, and I do think that's something that we need to address before, I, we can look at, at, at the dimensional requirements and say, right now that they are in the RC or the R four district. But we're going to have to face that much quicker than, than originally anticipated, because we're talking about cluster development. And so we're gonna, we're gonna run into that problem. If we're gonna, if we're gonna convert it to, to the R two and have it similar, it's gonna impact the decisions that we make related to, related to this particular issue. I personally, related to this issue, like the idea of saying that it's, it almost has to be a hybrid. What is the purpose that we want to have open space for in a subdivision? Is it not so that there can be playgrounds and areas in which people can gather together outdoors? We're not getting that if, if all we have are the wetlands. But at the same time, we don't want to take up all of the available land and have that in open space, because that doesn't leave the homeowner a lot of property.
How about if we have, instead of either or, have something like maybe thirty percent of it must be outside wetland area? I, I agree that if, if we make it too restrictive, it would be very challenging for a lot of developers to be able to build anything. We, we don't want to do that. But on the other hand, we are getting the stuff, the, the areas they can't build on anyways. So it's not, I don't know if, and it's not all that usable, except it does save, it does protect wetlands and habitat for wildlife. But if, maybe if we had something in between, so there could be a, a ball field or a walking path or something like that.
Well, that's, that's what I like about this proposal under Section D. Having reasonable utility to the residents of the proposed development in the R three and RC districts, the amount of dedicated open space shall equal or exceed fifty percent of the net residential acreage. So you, you're saying that at a minimum, fifty percent of the, of the open space has to, has to be developable. You could put a house there. But we're saying, no, you're not gonna. That's gonna be open space for the purposes of a playground or a ball field or some other recreational activity.
To the chair?
Yes.
I, I think it's, well, if we're gonna do that, because the sentence in D that says in the R three and RC districts, dedicated open space shall equal or exceed fifty percent of the net residential acreage calculated for, for the development, which is different than it being developable. Does that make sense? So if we want to make sure that the land that's being set aside for open space is good, usable land, I think we need to insert the word developable in, with the word development, because the, the development is the, the greater whole, right?
Well, no, because the net residential acreage defines how much or how many lots you can have and how many houses you can put in there.
In the development, isn't a development considered a, a communal area of different lots? But the, the area that we're setting aside for, you know, open space has to be developable, so it can't be wetlands, it can't be marsh. Maybe Jens can. I always thought when you move into a development or you're building a development, it means that you're building an area that includes multiple lots. But it doesn't say anything about the land, all of it being developable. I mean, so we want the open space to be able, to be worthy of being developed.
I, I agree. I, I, it's not clear that that's what we mean. I think some phrase like that should be put in there.
So Jens, what's your interpretation of a development as opposed to land that is developable? You can have developable land in a development, right? But the development is a larger whole, isn't it?
It is. I mean, it's, I think it sounds to me like one is a fait accompli and the other one is something that is in prospect.
Right. And the quality of the space, the land, it has to be able to be developed, built on.
Indeed. Yep.
So we need to put that word in along with the word development. I think that the.
Developable.
It has to be developable in the development, so.
Well, let me ask you this. It doesn't net residential acreage, that is, the net residential acreage is that land that's developable in the project?
By developable, we mean, we mean that it is capable of being given some utility of some kind, right?
Right.
It's, it has an ability to be constructed upon.
So then, Tad, if you take out the word the, if you take out the article the before development, then the residential acreage calculated for development, not for the development, because the development implies that it's a greater whole.
For the project or for the subdivision? Because that's.
Right. The subdivision itself is the development.
Well, that's what I'm saying. It's take out the word development, since that seems to be a stumbling block, and we'll call it the project or the, or how about improvement? Well, the, the development is the name for the application that's before you. That is for the entire parcel and how they propose to develop. That's what we mean by the development.
Well, I, I think if you take out the article the, you'll be fine. I think it, it says then, then development becomes synonymous with developable.
If we use the term net residential acreage right in there, fifty percent of the net residential acreage, rather than.
For development.
Yeah, yeah. So, because I think that the term development isn't as clear, because.
Well, when you put the word the in front of it, it indicates that you're talking about something other than the quality of the parcel.
It could be, but here's what I'm thinking. If, if I was a developer, I wouldn't, I, I'm thinking a development is all my land. That's what I wanted to develop. And if there was a term net residential acreage, at least it would, it would require them to understand what that means. Instead of just assuming I can, this is all my land.
Well, developable, then there's no question if you use that term in the sentence.
Question, because what defines developable?
Yeah.
Able to be built upon.
I, I, we have the technology to build anywhere. We really do.
Ted, what is it, what does it mean, built on? Is it, does that mean, does that include a path? Does it include, does it necessarily include a structure? What does it mean?
Net residential density is the gross acreage of the parcel minus all square footage or area of wetlands, proposed roads and access points and steep slopes, in excess of twenty-five percent, which I think is kind of low. But that's, that's, those are things that technically are difficult to develop on. Deep slopes aren't really that difficult anymore, but, but those are the criteria that are used to determine whether or not the, the, what you have to do is you have to measure all the hydro soils, all the wetlands, all the steep slope areas, all the roads you intend to put in, and subtract that acreage from the total acreage. And that gives you the net residential acreage. And then you divide that net residential acreage by the minimum lot size of the, the district you're in. Three acres for the N, for the R four, two acres for R two and R, R three, one acre for R one. And, and that gives you what's called net residential density. That'll tell you how many lots you theoretically can get on that parcel.
Well, so let's back up for a second. So what we're really trying to accomplish here in this discussion is preserving open space that is actually usable.
Correct.
So, and we, we started out this discussion by talking about wetlands. And there are qualities to the different wetlands. I mean, some wetlands are not wetlands during dry periods. And then would that wetland qualify for open space as opposed to a marsh or a bog or whatever that people couldn't use to, for recreation? So, you know, the bottom line is, this discussion is about preserving open space that is actually usable for recreation, whether that's walking, biking, you know, hiking, you know, bird watching or whatever. So, and the two thousand and seven COM Plan says to preserve fifty percent. So we're already making a concession. So, I think we're back to the word developable. And why, maybe we define it here that developable means able to be used for recreation as open space.
You know, Sue, as you were saying that, and including bird watching. Some of the best bird watching involves logs and marsh areas.
Right. True. But you gotta stand on something solid to watch the birds, presumably. Maybe not.
Bird walks, right?
Let's get Mr. Audubon in here.
I had a, I had a client show me some pictures of, of a couple of great snowy owls that they took pictures of. I think they were at Benefit Pool last week. Really impressive critters.
I think we, I, I'm, I'm feeling we already have the definition net residential acreage that I think we can work with. Because we can keep on splitting hairs. What is developable? It, it would mean something different for every, we, we could spend two years trying to define that. And maybe if we need to, but we already have something that's already in our definitions.
I, I agree, Tom. I think net residential acreage is pretty well-defined. We know what, what that represents and what.
We understand that as well.
What, what this is saying is that you can, at least fifty percent of that net residential acreage has to be set aside for open space. So you're gonna have playground areas, you're going to have ball field areas. You're gonna have places where you could, theoretically, you could go out and throw a blanket on the ground and have a picnic.
So if, if we do agree to go with that, I, I personally feel fifty percent is a lot to, to take. It could be seen as taken from what they can develop. But I, I just, I'm feeling that's a little high, right?
I I I just like the idea of saying that there was going to be some land that is good usable land that uh in this case, it's going to be part of the net residential acreage, be it fifty percent or be it twenty five percent or some other percentage. I like the idea that we're saying that we're going to have some of that land set aside. The question becomes what percentage?
Question. Marty?
The question is, if you have that there, who's responsible to create that?
Well, the creation of it would be for the developer, the maintenance of it would be for the homeowners association. And and I will be the first person to acknowledge that homeowners associations may not want to do it. They they may not enforce the law, but that doesn't mean that we shouldn't require them to do something.
They can always use um the a a land trust to maintain or to.
Yeah. Have them give it over to to act.
Just wanna run through like a scenario, let's say someone had forty acres, let's say, in 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 this town. It's it's common that half of that acreage is is wet. It's, yeah, half, half of town's wet. So now they're down to fifty percent of maybe buildable, never mind, not even counting roads and in steep uh areas. So we're saying half of that, half of that buildable area has to go to open space. So they're going from forty acres down to ten acres. And I think that might be asking a lot.
It's pretty steep. You know, we probably won't get a developer to put in there, we won't make enough money.
Right.
So fifty percent is a lot.
Yeah.
So so what percentage should we use?
Well, what what it says is whatever you have for reduction in your minimum lot size has got to go into open space. So that means if you have a three acre lot, let's take the R four, three acre that you develop, and you're gonna reduce that lot size, because you can do that in the cluster subdivision. Say I'm gonna reduce it down to one acre. So I I can have one acre lots, forty, you know, forty three thousand square foot lots. And that means I've got to take those other two lot, two acres of land and dedicate that into the open space. Now, what the the proviso that we have in the ordinance right now that says in the rural districts, and that's plural, it says you shall make sure that's at least fifty percent the total area of the property. That's the way it's, it's, it is right now. So fifty percent exists right now. And it's, it's, if you had good farmland, for instance, that's a pretty heavy heavy hit, but you get, you get to, you get to actually reduce it down accordingly. Um, the problem that we're running into is we're getting into more and more marginal lands right now. Whereas, as Tom says, half the town is wetlands. Well, yeah, as we start getting into some of these, some of the areas, uh you know, into Duckbrook watershed or into the uh into the Brimstone watershed or or farther out um uh Swan Brook or or even uh Goff's Mill. We're getting into large outwash areas where we have a lot of of forested wetlands. We have a lot of wetlands.
So maybe that brings us back, Tad, to the point that oh, that cluster housing isn't always required and is discretionary depending upon where, you know, the land upon which the development is being built.
Right.
So.
Yeah, I'm not, we always have a formula. That's, I'm beginning to, as I work through some of these models, I'm beginning to wonder. And especially, I haven't even gotten into the next section, which is when we get, we we go soil based lot sizing, it gets worse. I mean, it gets a lot worse. So I'm not sure the fifty percent, I I'm, I'm, I'm a little nervous about fifty percent of net residential. Because you're taking a lot of land out of somebody's inventory. That's, that's half of his, of his her developable land. And that could be a tough sell. It it it's what it is right now. Right now that law exists. It says in the rural districts that we have to take fifty percent of that land has got to be in in open space, and it hasn't been hard so far. If we look at, if we look at a couple of our projects, and we look at, okay, Oak Ridge Terrace, huge area of wetland there. That wasn't hard for them to achieve that. Uh, it's even easier over on Arundel Keep where over half the, half of the property is uh is wetland, and you know, major resource protection district. We're gonna find the same thing down on Arundel uh on Irving Road subdivision, same wetland, same wetland complex is in the rear of their project. Then we're gonna get something very similar to what we're having on Arundel Keep. So we're gonna keep getting this situation, we're gonna be having um more than half the land already is in wetland and therefore is automatically uh in open space. And we have to ask ourselves the question, if we, if if half the land is in open space, and then we have to take another half of the land and put that into another kind of open space that's usable, how much more land do they have to develop?
So is that protective, though, to have that? What we seem as in, what we, some of us see as onerous at fifty percent? Isn't it also protective in terms of preserving the character, the rural character that Arundel is trying to preserve? So, you know, it cuts both ways. Yeah, maybe it's not so great for the developer, but it is better for the town and what it's trying to achieve in terms of maintaining its, you know, character. So I wouldn't jettison it so fast.
Yeah, I I think it really, it's gonna be, there's so many variables here uh as to, you know, what what district we're talking about and and the amount of wetland in any particular piece. Because either way, it could be to, really could be almost no effect to develop others, depending on the piece that we're talking about, it could be an onerous impact. You know, I I think we, we we gotta have some standard in that the current, the current one at fifty percent. Can you point out to us any particular projects that have had a problem, Tad, that because of that number that were worthy projects and that stumbled on that?
I cannot, because we haven't had we, since the crash of two thousand eight nine, subdivisions have been slow in this town. I think those have been on the board for a long time, like Tom and Roger and and Marty can, and 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 Rich has been there for, what, ten years now, eleven or twelve years? We went through a very slow period. We weren't, we weren't getting any subdivisions, if you recall. We, we've been doing a lot of basically divi, uh family divisions and splits. And then the planning board's been doing non-residential development for the most part. That's what we've been basically approving and and reviewing. Um, so we haven't had in in private ways, and so we haven't really had any subdivisions per se. Um, so we really don't have a good record on how odor, how onerous this really is. Um, because we really haven't had that many subdivisions. Um, and right now, it's not onerous at all, because we're we're into lands that at least half the land is already in uh in, in, not undevelopable, but either regulated out of being developable like we have at Arundel's Keep and also we had over at uh um Oak Ridge Terrace and as we had in uh in Irving Road subdivision. Um, and oh, how about that, that one that was on the corner of um Brimstone? Um, you remember the four lot subdivision where they just, they couldn't, they couldn't develop anything because all of it was floodplain and wetlands, except for that one along the road. So those are situations where they really had a lot of natural resource um difficulties, and and they were protected wetlands. They were either stream protection, and in most cases, out on the Irving Road, they were all resource protection. So uh on Arundel's Keep, most of the open space you know, is a good portion of the open space, also has two hundred and fifty feet of upland between it and the upland edge of that wetland that can be used for trails and 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 other things at this point.
But but.
That raises.
That uh that that suggests to me that if we're gonna do anything here, that we should uh act with restraint and tweak and not do anything significant right now.
But I think, to me, it raises the question of using a Arundel's Keep. We're talking about net developable land, but the only reason that Arundel's Keep is having a problem is that that land is in the shoreline setback zone of, what is it, two hundred and fifty feet? We could include that as part of the open space for the calculation on the land. Yes, they're gonna have to keep it that way anyway. But if it, it it just happens to be usable land that is inside the setback.
And it therefore is not usable.
Right, and and that's, that's part of the problem, because you get caught in a circular thing that says, okay, we've got land that, other than the fact that it's in the shoreline zone, would be usable land, but we can't use it because it's there. So I would not have a problem if we had um some kind of a decision tree that went, is this land in in the setback? Yes, it is. Okay, use it as part of the calculation for open space. Because at least that, at least that would be coming into consideration, because it is open space and it is usable. You just can't build on it because of where it's located.
And we do use that. Uh, they can use that, uh and they did partially, not completely.
Are they? Okay.
And they also did that uh in uh if you recall, that also happened in Oak Ridge Terrace where they had to maintain. Uh, they had to get their lots. We required them to pull their lots out of um the wetland, out of the resource, that was a shoreline overlay district there. And we told them, get it out of there. And they did. They made those lots smaller to keep them out of the uh the resource protection area.
So yeah, I'm not, I'm not suggesting they should be allowed to build in that area. Just that that area, that, we could take that into consideration when we look at open space. Because once, once the property is done, that open space isn't gonna be built on anyway, because it's gonna, it's gonna be restricted. But I think that's, that might be part of the solution for for Tom and Jens to say, okay, how are we without being onerous in the taking of land, we're allowing that to be counted from an open space point of view? I don't know. It's, it's a tough, tough thing to look at and come up with with an answer. I agree that fifty percent might be a little bit much. But in some cases, twenty five percent might be a little bit much.
That's where the discretion of the planning board and the judgment and experience of the planning board comes into play. That's where you folks sit as citizens and experienced planners. And you have to make judgments on whether or not a project is really meeting the intent of the ordinance. And whether or not um the planning board can in fact has language that gives them latitude to make decisions that aren't necessarily written in stone, that you say, well, we want we want this area more for the open space than this area over here, or we want more of this open space. You do, if you write it with with some discretion in there, and I think we've put some more discretion in this than some of the language we've talked about, then the planning board can make value judgments um and and negotiate a better deal for the town. Uh, the problem is that you have to be diligent and you have to uh at the same, same time, there there is opportunities for you to um appear to be courageous.
Yeah.
You have to kind of set internal standards on what you're trying to achieve that are consistent with the circumstances, even though circumstances are changing from project to project. You know, um it it's not easy and it's tough to to make it exacting, but that's where discretion on an experienced board really needs to to work its way in. Otherwise, they just follow the formula. Oh, yeah, I met this standard. And we've seen this, we've seen this work, you know, especially with buffers. Oh, yeah, I'm twenty five feet, I haven't cut anything. It's okay. You know, I met that standard. Well, you really haven't met that standard, but you did on the, on the ground, so we can't do anything more to you. Um, we, we, if we have it a little looser on that and the planning board's very diligent, you can be you'd be very effective, but if if you, if you let your guard down and and you can, it can swing the other way where you don't achieve your goals. So it's a, it's, it's a real tough balance to reach. I personally am nervous about fifty percent for that resident. I put it in there because I think that's where you guys were going with saying, we want a hard, firm amount of open space that isn't just always swamp. And that's a very good thing that the board brought up. We've been talking about all along, but I'm a little concerned about making a hard number that will just dissuade people from from developing at all. And I think also, we we have to think from a political standpoint, we're gonna get you know, if we make it too strict, it's gonna get, we're gonna get pushback, seriously.
I think it's, it's dead on arrival. Yeah, I don't, I just don't know how that wouldn't get shot down. But you know, I, I think on average, I think we, we will get good and the bad. Lately, there's been a lot of marginal lands, so it seems like all we're getting is the wetlands, but you think of Hisong Development. That was all upland. In that case, we got um, it's the front drive going in. It's, it must be, what's that? Four, five acres of just lawn, and that could, a ball field could go in there.
Part of that was wet.
Okay, but not like we're seeing at at Timber Ridge and other places, you know?
No, it's, it 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 makes, it's a very dramatic entry from uh that part of Old Alfred Road. It's a very dramatic entry. It's, it's uh which makes it a very successful development, and that was very well done. It was well designed.
Okay. Susan, Susan said it has a comment. She's had her hand up for a while.
It's okay. You guys are on the board. I'm just here to listen to. I have a question, though, because again, this is of interest to me, as you know. Um, the goal, I thought, was to have it be something that you were talking about the buffers, especially when you came out for the sidewalk and you were coming, talking about the concern that, again, I'm just using the one that that I know the most of is Oak Ridge Terrace, is that, yes, it's all wetlands, and so right now the houses um are really close to the road and really close together because they're meeting what you said, the standards. They're going into it and they have all this material behind them that they can't build anyway as it's going near the brook and the pond on the sides and around the outside for other wetland things. So all these houses are now clustered tight together. They're literally close to the road. I know the one that they did for the um the model that you guys saw, the one that they said, oh, they're gonna be such far back, it's literally like five feet, ten feet difference. There's not a heck of a lot of difference between the houses. They're right beside each other. And so this open space that you're discussing for cluster development, again, might be specific to each individual one, and should there be something written on provisional for wetlands and not wetlands or where they're built, because you were saying the other place had dry places and can go. I don't know if it's makes you, makes more work for you, but to have it be classifications for that as what uh open space, what percentage of uh can be a wetland, what percentage can be a this, because again, I don't want you taking away fifty percent of someone's developable, developable land for something when I'm looking at a development that basically has nothing that can be developed, but anything that they're not building on. Because they're meeting your standard.
Yeah, and they're on an upland area, they they meet the net residential density. Their density was based on that net residential density. And and the thing is, yeah, the configuration of that was very tight. And it's, it was a very, the the funny thing is, that's an R two district, so that's not a rural district, so the board had smaller lots there than they would have, let's say, in the R three or the R four district. Because those are larger lots.
Right.
Used down on. But I think, I think the thing is that the question is uh really trying to. trying to fit, trying to get a better fit of the development into the landscape, get it fit the terrain a little bit better. Let it uh make it a a better design is where this board really wants to go. Not just meet these minimum standards, but the board needs to have a sort of a a design checklist to say, well, does this really fit into the land? Are these lots really, shouldn't lots be a little bigger? Shouldn't you, you know, the the what we talked about, the the bonus lot? Like with with that, with one developer, he said, well, I'm, I I can get this many lots in there because that's my net residential density. I'm gonna squeeze them in there. And we just had that issue with a Rundle's keep. In which they said, well, I can have nine lots. I'm gonna make this, these lots small in order to meet that. And I think the board was recognizing, okay, we have a septic problem there, but more importantly, how is this a rural subdivision? How does this reflect the rural character of the land when you're jamming these buildings together? And and you folks broke with convention on the on that Rundle's keep one where you said, we're, we're, we're not gonna do that. We're not gonna do it the same way we've always done it. And I think that's where the board is starting to show that it's more concerned with the outcome than necessarily dealing with meeting the specific. Which means that you have to have language that gives you discretion. And that's, that's what we need is more discretionary language and frankly speaking, the will to use that discretionary language in negotiating with a developer.
All right, we're hearing this, uh we're hearing this again and again from Ted and I mean, I think I like what I'm hearing.
Yep. I think the, I think one of the issues that we may have when I'm looking at this in the R three and the RC district, the amount of dedicate dedicated open space shall equal. That's really not a debatable issue. So we would definitely have to get rid of that, get rid of the shall equal. That does not give us a choice.
May equal.
Should?
Should, I think, would be be would be better or can equal up to fifty percent. Allow them to to give us a smaller number. I'm sorry, Susan.
Um we can recommend fifty percent and then maybe we have a floor based upon the discretion of the board.
I think that would be better because when I read this, the word shall doesn't give you a choice.
No, that would have to be changed.
So we could say the recommended allotment would be fifty percent and can go as low as X based upon the discretion of the board, but not less than X. And what is X? Is it thirty percent? Is it twenty-five percent? Is it forty percent? The board will determine that based on its discretion and the actual piece of property that we're looking at. And the way in which the development has been laid out.
Yeah, I got a question.
Yeah, Marty.
Now, with all these different uh stuff being built, does anything come into compensation for the square footage of the house? I mean, uh, if you're building a bigger house, you know, you're gonna need more instead of having tiny home, you know, like a does that add in or would add in anywhere for consideration?
That's an interesting question. You know, building McMansions on tiny lots, you know, the the Portland way. Summit Street, Portland way. Um, yeah, I we, the thing about having it, having a negotiated cluster development is that the planning board can say you need to have a larger lot. And I think we we talked about that a little bit more in earlier, is it earlier dimensionally? Yeah, we were talking about that it lot sizes may be reduced, however, the total area of the lot reduction below the transfer. Actually, a little bit further on, we get into the issue of having adequate space. You know, adequate space means not just adequate space in the lot, but that the 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 building it shouldn't consume fifty percent of the lot or, you know, seventy percent of the lot. And you know, that's something we really haven't haven't really dealt with. You know, the question of where we put the giant monoliths on tiny, tiny lots. And how that affects, that can affect a lot of things. That can affect the quality of the neighborhood. That can affect the uh the amount of light pollution. That can affect the uh uh air and the old English sun, access to sunlight, which is the basis for zoning in in England, the old English law. So, um
Well, we have setbacks and things like that, right?
Yeah, we we
So that sort of protect, you know, limits you.
Well, yeah, but we 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 don't have that that the point is, we don't have to have setbacks. Every single on a cluster lot is negligible. The last couple of subdivisions, we we've been having the the designer actually put the setback lines on. It was a required to. If you look at the the uh, we, let's go back to his song. That his song development, if you look at the at the approved plans on there, there's no setback lines on any of those lots. There was zero. In fact, when this first started, the code enforcement officer came to me and asked me, so what's the setbacks? I don't see them. I said, there are none. The planning board put none in. Tom, I think you were on the board then, weren't you? Roger, you?
Yeah, yeah. It made sense because their their setbacks were the entire property. And then they chose how to arrange the houses, make them sellable and have some privacy and everything, the best use of the land. We left that up to them and it it works, I think it works fine.
Yep. Yeah, it well, you know, sometimes it also depends on the quality of of the developer or the builder.
Yeah, that's the 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 hidden, the elephant in the room that, you know, it some develops like his song and and others have been been really easy to work with, but willing to work with us. Others, though, they choose, may choose not to. And we've had mostly good developments, but we could have someone who doesn't want to play. They just want to build and get out. And and so sometimes this discretion can be really tricky. We need some
That's where Ted is saying that we as a board have the discretion to say, no, you're not gonna do that. You know, you you're gonna have to meet some others. If if we have to impose a standard, we have the ability to do so and we will. We're not afraid to use that ability.
I think we we need to do that.
I agree. There there are, and we did. When when you look at a Rundle's keep, uh Jamie came up with a great idea about moving them up and going across the back. And that seems to work.
Oh, yeah. In that case, that didn't work. I mean, that that we couldn't do that because of the setback, but what that did is that opened up the option of doing something different than the normal keyhole, which everybody does.
Yep.
And that's, everybody likes to do the keyhole and um and this broke that convention. And we looked at an option that we hadn't thought about, which was put the drive, put the road, put the driveway, common driveway in the back. And we couldn't do it because of the set, because of the setback from the from the the wetlands. But we came up with a one that was even better, which was, okay, put in shared driveways. Thou shalt have shared driveways and thou shalt bequeath the fifty-foot setback to the to the Rumble Conservation Trust, who shall own the constant, own the rights to that land. Without, eh eh you know, frankly speaking, a lot of people have been uh commending you folks for that. I'm hearing more and more people actually saying, wow, what a great idea. So
And it was a better solution, really.
Much better. And see, that's where the planning board starts starts thinking a little differently. We are more goal oriented rather than standard oriented. Trying to achieve something that is a better design, what Susan was talking about a long time ago, design oriented rather than standard oriented. Trying to get a better design out of this, something that fits better into and if we, if you, if we have that discretion, the planning board at the same time has to be very diligent to keep that up, to keep that pressure up. Because otherwise, it could be an open door. The barn door could just swing open.
So we're back to, why don't we recommend fifty percent? And let's figure out a floor of X, whatever X is. And that the middle ground is by virtue of the discretion of the board based upon the property being developed.
So you're suggesting using a range, Susan, as opposed to a number, something like between a a third and fifty percent?
Well, if you drop the fifty percent is the recommended. And if you want to drop below that number, you can with the with the approval of the board to a certain level, but you can't go below that level. So what's, because we we want to have a floor.
Yeah.
So is the floor thirty percent?
Yeah, I would, I would say, I would say the floor is twenty-five percent.
And fifty percent of the fifty.
So I'm fine with that. So the recommended standard is fifty percent.
But given a proper design, we can go as low as twenty-five.
That's correct, but not lower than that.
So it would be, should be, should uh equal uh fifty percent or maybe reduced at the discretion of the board down to twenty-five percent?
Yeah.
Depending on the design.
That that would allow um allow us the opportunity to consider um the developers' suggestions for um included attributes to develop amenities, included amenities.
Yep.
That make it that much more attractive.
Right. I I I agree. And that's, that brings us back to a Rundle's keep. And um that those were discretionary decisions we made that produced a better development.
Well, yeah, eh eh I still am afraid of of having even twenty-five percent. Look at a a Rundle's keep. Could they have put aside twenty-five percent and still build? What do they have, ten houses, ten lots?
Yep.
I thought it was nine. I thought they reduced one lot.
Down to nine. Would they, would by putting twenty-five percent, would that that force them to go down to six lots? I think it might.
But now it's fifty percent, Tom. At least we're giving people flexibility.
But that fifty percent, we're we're allowing for the unbuildable land.
Well, it says developable, so that's not unbuildable.
It's a loophole that we've
Well, it's, it's, it's a loophole that we're allowing them to enter into to get a reduction if they want the reduction. They may not.
And we would have veto power, wouldn't we not?
Right.
Yes, we would.
Because it's discretionary.
They could come back to us and say, well, we want, okay, we want, if if we say between twenty-five and fifty and they come back and they start off at the twenty-five, we can always say, no, no, not gonna work that way. You need to, you need to go up a little bit.
You need to show us why twenty-five percent is as much as you can set aside. And you would need to show us the development. I think that that's a mistake maybe that we made. Um, we should have played around more. Now I've blocked it out. The development near Susan Senate, what's that?
Oak Ridge.
We might have taken a, an Rundle's keep approach to Oak Ridge and we wouldn't have gotten what got developed there.
Don't forget, phase two is coming your way soon, right?
Yeah, that's our timer, but that that's an example of a developer who wasn't as amenable to to working with us. You know, eh he wasn't a bad developer, but I don't think he would have been as as pliable or as as um
That's where we get to weigh in with Teddy Roosevelt's big stick and say, guess what? You're gonna do it this way.
Do do we have that in us? I don't know if if
But but that's where discretion comes in. I mean, I I think what Ted was saying, when we have these hard and fast rules, we get caught up in them just as much as the developers do. And I think
And we have to remember that we can
Flexibility, both for the developers and the board, we can meet them halfway. Now, a Rundle's keep got a better development. It's better for the developer. And it's also better for a Rundle. We could have done that with Oak Ridge. But we we didn't for various reasons, some understandable and some not. But um we get to do it on phase two.
So Ted, with the uh with any development, they the number of lots they can build is only based on acreage of net residential acreage or
Yeah.
Or it's after subtracting wetlands and roads and and what's left is how many lots, how many acres they can divide.
Right.
It got, it got X number of lots. That doesn't mean they can't include bad land as part of the lot. They can. Um unless we in if we do the New Hampshire thing, you know, the soil-based lot thing, this could get really funky. That says you gotta have, you gotta, you gotta have a a certain amount of good soils on that property. Or you or guess what? You have to reach what they call a quotient of one, or else you don't have a lot.
Baby steps, Ted, baby steps.
That gets complicated.
First things first here.
You know, a little nervous about it right now because I'm I'm I I've started doing some modeling of this. Like, uh-oh, I've got some conflicts with cluster development. Because I've got soils, well, we'll go into it a little later, but yeah, um mixing baby steps, you're right. And maybe we might have to do this later, this soil-based uh zoning a little later after I work out the kinks. I'm not sure this is ready for prime time yet.
Let's get them used to the fifty to twenty-five percent with discretion of the board.
But let's also get them used to having performance standards.
Yes, that would be nice too. I'll be right back.
You know, um, we want to achieve these goals. And maybe that's what we need to do is say in a cluster development, you are to achieve these goals. Because it doesn't really say that. If we look at our clustering thing, it's all spe, it's all specs. You will have X number of buffer. You will have uh this amount of open space, you will, you know, there's really not not a lot of discretion in it. And we're trying to build more discretion into the planning board. Can in fact start start exercising more design discretion in it. And I think if we look at preservation of natural resources and uh, you know, some of these other water supply and common septic system, yeah. We get into landscape screening and buffering. You know, I think upfront, just the very factors where we're talking about how you've got to uh how you basically, you have to uh submit a cluster of the conventional design to the planning board. That that your net residential densities, um what you have to do for that. But you know, the very fact that when you say mandatory cluster subdivision, in our definition, it says unless the, that you you have to cluster in accordance with section nine, three, twelve, unless the planning board determines that an alternative design is more appropriate for a conformance with the terrain, septic, soil suitability, open space preservation, conservation of rural landscapes as defined in the Rumble Conservation Comprehensive Plan. We're talking about some standards here. We're talking about goals. Not just slapping lots on, but that it has to conform to the landscape. It has to conform to the land. You're not gonna blow out a whole area or fill up a whole whole slope in order to get a lot in. Uh that it should be in a, in a natural pattern with with the land. We're gonna have to start looking at that. And you remember, we grappled with that with a certain subdivision off of El, Old Alfred Road that ended up not going anywhere because they were gonna blast the heck out of the land. If you remember, we're gonna have a road with twenty-foot cuts in it. And the planning board finally said, that's not in conformance with the land. It's not meeting the landscape. You know, it it's, it's, it's creating a giant scar and and you guys said no to that alternative.
I'm not, I'm not sure that that has to be spelled out in the ordinance as much as it has to be understood by the board that we're going to look at the land and and the contours. understood by the board that we're going to look at the land and, and the contours and the topography and the soil types to determine whether or not we think it is appropriate.
But it's gotta be in there when you go through your findings of fact. Remember, when you had a contentious, you had a contentious conditional use. Went down a series of performance standards and it was denied based on that one perfor, one performance standard. Okay? And it was upheld in court because you specified that this was not, did not meet a certain standard. And, and the court upheld the town.
But do, do we have to call out the, the topography as a standard? And find what we mean?
Conform, it, it conforms to the natural topography of the land.
Okay.
Right now, it's in our subdivision ordinance. We don't call it.
No. Then. Then we need, we need to start looking at that.
Yeah. Yeah, I think so, but it should also be called out in here. We should have parallel, this, parallel, I, I, I don't like having regulations in, you know, that are in two different places, but we should make references to that, that it should meet. It should, a cluster development must meet the same standards as a conventional subdivision in the sense that yeah, you gotta conform to the land. And you have to provide for adequate buffers. And when we get down to the question of bonus lots, you know, can you provide bonus lots? You know, the, but the board's gotta have some discretion here and then we, we've gotta have things that you can vote on, specific things. Does this conform with the land? Does this, is this suitable for the soils? Is, is there adequate buffering from neighbors? Is there a nuisance created? All of these things. We have to vote on those specifically. So if you deny, then, then i- i- if you were to deny a project, then you have a defensible argument in front of the judge for making that denial instead of it sounding like it's a capricious decision. We don't like it. Why not? Well, because we didn't think it fit the land. You gotta be very specific.
Okay.
Jens can, Jens can speak to this better than I can because he has to defend this stuff or, or attack it in court.
That answers my question.
It sounds like I also have to actually get a little bit more specific with, with, with some of these performance standards. We've got minimum lot sizes in here, yeah. Yeah, do I wanna get into that? See, one talks a little bit about that. It says minimum lot sizes, if we, if we go to E, we've.
Yeah, but be, before we go to that, let's make sure we're happy with the twenty-five to fifty percent.
We have to make that language very, we have to do that very carefully. That the recommended standard is fifty percent.
Is that of net residential density or gross area?
Net residential.
Okay.
Are we, are we using the word density or acreage?
Acreage.
Acreage.
Okay. Shall equal.
The amount of dedicated open space is recommended to be fifty percent of the net residential acreage. This amount can be reduced at the discretion of the planning board based upon facts and circumstances presented.
To a point of no less than twenty-five.
No less than twenty-five percent. Can be reduced to no less than twenty-five percent.
Correct.
So this is gonna be, this actually is gonna be like the shoreline zoning, a special exemption for setbacks. He's done situation, situation, determination. Though the plan was not hard and fast, but can make discretionary decisions and negotiate for a better deal.
Based on, you know, the development and the quality of the land.
Contingent.
Yes, contingent.
I'll, I'll work on that and send. You wanna work hour, do you wanna go down that list? You want me to come up with a list of that or? Contingent upon findings.
You know, specific to the project.
I feel warm and fuzzy about that. No offense to that. I, I think.
That's fine.
With the discretion inherent in the planning board to reduce this standard, contingent upon.
Should we say reduce or modify?
Site conditions. Now, what are those? What are we trying to achieve? I think is, that's what we have to state.
Open space.
We don't want everybody to run in and say, oh, we can reduce it to twenty-five percent. I want that. And, you know, I'll take that one.
Right, you have to be able to justify it with a good reason.
If we build in, uh, in, in very strong terms, that which Ted is urging, and that is the planning board's discretion. Then I think that, that, that provides some buttress against, uh, over enthusiasts who are just going to leap at that and not substantially provide the benefit of the town that we're looking to achieve.
Well, and the onus is on the developer. The, the planning board, why it has to be reduced?
Well, we, we can make the, we can have the developer give us plans at fifty percent. And then he can make the argument to reduce it down and explain why.
Right, but it's, he has to make that argument.
Oh, yeah, I'm not gonna go make it.
We're not gonna make it for him. Or her.
Could we, could we, um, the phrase, other, uh, facts and circumstances, can we, can we, uh, work with that phrase to make it less generic and more particular?
That's what we have to do. I, I, I don't wanna.
I think the, somebody said the quality of the land, I think that that matters.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You guys were also talking before the quality of the, um, the land and the vegetation. Because you're talking about your buffers and your things and your setbacks and your this and your that, because right now, as again, going back to Oak Ridge Terrace, a lot of the vegetation was dead and no one saw that from the roads.
Right, so the quality of the land and its surrounding, uh, vegetation and development.
There you go, because I'm just saying right now, because you can look at the land and go, the land's great, vegetation was horrific.
Quality and configuration.
There you go.
You also wanna see what's around it, what's been developed around it and.
Yeah, that, that's an important issue is fact as well.
Right, so. Cause then we get into uh, conflict between what's there and what's being built, so. Which we've seen. And should we have a provision, Ted, and is this the place to put it? Where the developments, the, the things that have been built and exist in the area sort of set the tone for what can be developed going forward. So when we get a situation, I guess that doesn't really apply because we're not talking about contractor yards. But when you get a McChip K, those houses were there before Bill Stilfen. And yet, and they should, you know, basically set the tone for what got built around them. As opposed to the yard itself imposing its personality on what was already existing uh, at the time it was developed.
Yeah.
May not be the place to do that because we're talking about residential, so you can shut me up at any moment, that'd be fine.
Mimics the existing patterns. In some places, you don't want it to mimic the existing settlement pattern.
Right, I agree, but. You know, you move next door to a dump or a firing range, haven't we had this, had this conversation? That's your problem.
Pretty much.
Somebody wants to put a dump or a firing range next to a, a, a street of, full of residences. That's the firing range and the dumps problem.
Yeah. It's, um, actually, it's usually the other way around. It's they put a development next to residential next, uh, development next to a, uh, existing firing. But.
We're fine.
Surroundings and, and it, the development around it.
Yeah, I, I, I was including, uh, you know, basically the location of the land. So I thought if we used, I mean, it's all about the land itself. So if we used the combination of the words, the location, configuration and quality. Are there any other attributes that we haven't touched upon that perhaps need to be injected in that, but?
No, I think it's pretty good.
No, rounded consideration.
I think that does pretty good.
And quality.
The quality is what does it for me. What's the quality of the land?
Is you guys wanna have some leverage on the provision of amenities as well?
Yes.
Like a playground, like walking trails. Remember, remember that was one of the things that Joe sold us on over at, uh.
Yeah.
Seasonal cottages?
It's walking, it's perimeter walking trails.
Hey, how about this? How about injecting that very thing? How about giving those, the developer a heads up as to what we're gonna be looking for?
Yeah.
So, so, so reduce the standard contingent upon location, uh, configuration and quality of the land. And the, uh, and the amenities, uh, proposed.
Yeah. As, how about that? Yeah, such as ball field.
But not excluding.
Yeah.
But not limited to.
But not limited to, thank you. No, you don't wanna dis, that as such as, because you wanna make someone give, commit to you with, with something out of the box.
Yeah. Heads up, an idea of what would, what a trade-off could look like.
To the chair.
Yeah, Marty.
But it can't be sold.
That's right.
Right.
It's, will not be sold, Marty.
That'll, that'll all be part of the deed on the house.
I'm talking about the, the situation at his son.
Yeah, well, that provision was in the, in the subdivision ordinance. That, that was the problem there, Marty, where his son was required to put in a playground, but the planning board gave him, um, permission not to put that playground in for consideration of fifteen thousand dollars.
Which, that went through the selectmen.
I don't think we should put, I don't think we should, uh, identify any particular amenities. I, I think we should leave the door open. In, in mind, depending on what thing comes forward. You know, where it is and what it's all about. And I think that we have hinted that up above anyway, in the language that Ted had in there. We're, we're looking for, um. Uses having reasonable utility to the resonance of the proposed development.
Right.
Okay, yeah, that's good.
And can we include that, what Jens just said, in the definition?
Let's.
I like the way this is shaping up, by the way.
Let's put it this way, if it was fifty-five and older, you don't necessarily need a playground.
That's true too, Marty.
Well, sometimes they have a park course, Marty.
Well, I'm, I'm just saying, I mean, uh.
Where you can exercise, you go to different stations for old people.
Watch it.
But yeah, I, I, I agree, Marty. I, I think Jens, Jens had the right idea of
Yes.
of not tying it down to anything specific.
Right.
Let, let the property owner come to us or let the developer come to us and say, these are the amenities that I'm looking at putting in there.
Would that include a golf course?
It could.
Well, would it be a private golf course?
No. I don't even golf and the answer is no.
All right, let's not get too far afield here, you, you golfer, you, pepper, you.
Now, if you put in a fishing pond and let me do it privately, we might be able to discuss things.
A trout farm.
How about that? There we go, all right.
All right, let's move on. I wanna get home.
Well, no, I'm thinking if we have finished up with, with that dimensional exemption and have that finished, it's quarter and nine.
Okay.
This is a good stopping point instead of jumping into something else.
It was great dialogue. I think we, we kinda resolved a lot tonight, so. I'm feeling better about that. Next time we get to deal with minimum lot sizes, where you wanna do option one or the hell that is option two. I like option two, but I'm beginning to wonder if it really works with cluster development.
But remember, we're gonna be flexible about cluster development. Whether or not it's required.
Well, I put in that reduction percentage, but I think that's all fantasy on my part. I, I, it's arbitrary and capricious, those numbers. Meanwhile, I.
I, I kind of like option one, actually. It, it pretty much spells out, you know, the, these are the land criteria that we're gonna be looking at.
There's, there's no reason why we couldn't evoke option two as one of the criteria, saying, well, you're giving us this land and, you know, this lot that's seventy-five percent Knomburg soils. And that's somewhat poorly drained. And if we were to use this standard, then you really actually need to give us a lot seventy-seven square, thousand square feet versus four thousand that you're giving us, so.
We, we could, we could have both options in there and let the developer pick which one of them he wants to use, if we're happy with both of them.
Gentlemen, we promised we were gonna tackle this.
Yes, we did, thank you, thank you.
Thank you, Susan.
Keep us back on track. We will, we will put this up on the next meeting.
Can I just throw one more fact out that I'm not seeing anywhere? And that is, is the contiguousness, is that a word?
Yeah.
Of the open space, because right now it could be like gerrymandered, just little strings all added up that, that really is worthless as.
You know, Tom, that's a really good point. It does need to be all tied together in some fashion so that it is interconnected and usable as a
Right, usable.
As a, as a complete facility and not little patches of ground.
Not necessarily at an island unto itself, connectivity to other open space and adjoining parcels is actually even more important.
Yes.
Yeah, yeah.
Right, that's sort of what Tom was saying.
These things go to the location of it.
Yeah.
And configuration.
Right.
Yeah. All right, I'll put this together. Excellent.
So I move we adjourn. Oh, no, you have to, uh, is there other business?
We gotta ask the planner if there's other business.
Oh, you have a meeting with the planning board, uh, with the selectman on the twenty-ninth, I believe.
And that is gonna be a Zoom meeting, is it not?
Yes, it is, or you can be in person, it's up to you.
I didn't know, I thought they were all gonna be together someplace else, doing it on Zoom. I hadn't heard what the details on it are.
Don't have the agenda yet, so I don't know. But I was indicating, it was indicating to me it was gonna be a, a Zoom. They meet together and they zoom it out. So you get them sitting at a, at a table and they get to look at you, you know, sitting there in your pajamas. That's the budget meetings and the selectman meetings so far, so.
All right, then I move that we, uh.